I'm called order September 23rd, Reg. Media Dayton City Council stand for the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the universal procedure of justice.
All right, need motion is second for the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Need discussion?
Mr. I just have a few edits, so I just need to correct the language for the franchise fee ordinance item L. It should be, instead of just listing franchise fee, it should say, and adopting new gas franchise fee for Center Point Energy. And then item O, I just wanted to know, is the payment of claims that we just have the incorrect date listed, so it is for September 23rd and not the 9th.
I'll correct item K as well. Should be an approval of reconvance, not approval of acquisition. Anyway, talked about that during the agenda meeting, but it should be an approval of reconvance only because of reconveing it from the county at this point, so thank you.
Any others? All right, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Passes four to zero. Okay, now we are on to recap a closed session. I have things to read. So under the open meeting law, when the city council has a closed meeting, the city is required to give a summary in the next open meeting about what happened in that closed meeting. This is done so that the public can be generally aware of what happened while we were in closed meeting. So on August 26th, 2025, Dayton City Council had a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D03 for the purpose of considering strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation of strategies or developments or discussion and review of labor negotiation proposals. Persons present at the meeting were Mayor Dennis Fisher, council members Scott Solanek, Sarah Van Aston, David Fashion, Stephanie Henderson, City Administrator Zach Dowd, Assistant City Administrator City Clerk Amy Benting, and City Attorney Amy Schmidt. During the closed meeting, city council considered a labor agreement proposal from the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Minnesota Council 5, Local 252454, ASME, and a labor agreement proposal from the Minnesota Teamsters Public and Law Enforcement Employees Union, Local Number 320, representing essential supervisory employees, or Teamsters. At the conclusion of their consideration of the terms of the labor agreement proposal from ASME, the city council directed the city administrator and assistant city administrator city clerk as to how to respond to the proposed terms during ongoing negotiations with ASME. At the conclusion of their consideration of the terms of the labor agreement proposal from the Teamsters, the city council directed the city administrator and assistant city administrator city clerk as to how to respond to the proposed terms during ongoing negotiations with the Teamsters. All right, so that's that one. So written summaries are included in the agenda tonight related to the closed meetings that we had on September 9th, but I will also state the summaries out loud for the record, and this is kind of long, but I have to get to them. Closed meeting summary, City Administrator Zach Dowd. On September 9th, 2025, the Dayton City Council held a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D05 subdivision 2B. Persons present at the closed meeting were Mayor Dennis Fisher, council members Scott Solanek, Sarah Van Aston, council member David Fashion, and council member Stephanie Henderson, Assistant City Administrator City Clerk Amy Benting, City Attorney Amy Schmidt, and City Administrator Zach Dowd. During the closed meeting, city council gave preliminary consideration of allegations or charges that were made by council member Stephanie Henderson against City Administrator Zach Dowd. In an email to the city attorney and mayor Dennis Fisher dated August 5th, 2025, council member Henderson had presented questions about whether city funds were expended unlawfully or without proper authorization, and whether the city administrator had exceeded his authority or breached fiduciary duty to the city. These questions were related to the city administrator's actions in which he allowed the fire chief to assign duties to two successive existing paid-on-call firefighters in a role that had not been established as a position approved by the city council, and to pay the second paid-on-call firefighter in that role at a higher rate of pay than what was established by the city council for paid-on-call firefighters in the city of Dayton. As part of this deliberations of these allegations, it was necessary for the city council to address council member Henderson's questions about the job classification of the paid-on-call firefighters who had served in the role, and the appropriateness of their continued participation in the Firefighters Relief Association. City council concluded that the duties and tasks performed by the paid-on-call firefighters who had served in the role did not change their employment classification as paid-on-call firefighters, and as such, the paid-on-call firefighters were not eligible for para. Therefore, it was appropriate for them to continue their participation in the Firefighters Relief Association. After consideration of the questions and allegations presented by council member Henderson, the city council concluded that the city administrator should have presented a position, description, and a rate of pay to the city council for approval prior to any person serving in this role. The city council concluded as follows: The city administrator had relied on advice from the city's prior legal counsel when he approved the request from the fire chief to assign extra duties to an existing paid-on-call firefighter. City funds were not expended unlawfully and did not exceed amounts approved by the city budget. City Administrator Dowd had not exceeded his authority or breached any fiduciary duty, and no disciplinary action against City Administrator Dowd or further consideration of the allegations or charges were warranted. I'll move on to the next summary, closed meeting summary. Fire Chief Gary Hendrickson, on September 9th, 2025, Dayton City Council held a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D05 subdivision 2B. Persons present at the closed meeting were Mayor Dennis Fisher, council members Scott Solanek, Sarah Van Aston, David Fashion, Stephanie Henderson, Assistant City Administrator City Clerk Amy Benting, City Attorney Amy Schmidt, Fire Chief Gary Hendrickson, Amy Perouse, Teamsters Local 320, Kevin Back, Teamsters General Counsel, and Greg Bursted, Union Steward. During the closed meeting, the city council gave preliminary consideration of allegations or charges that were made by council member Stephanie Henderson against Fire Chief Gary Hendrickson. In an email to the city attorney and mayor Dennis Fisher dated August 5th, 2025, council member Henderson had presented questions about whether city funds were expended unlawfully or without proper authorization, and whether the fire chief had exceeded his authority or breached a fiduciary duty to the city. These questions were related to the fire chief's actions in which he assigned duties to two successive existing paid-on-call firefighters in a role that had not yet been established as a position approved by the city council, and paid the second paid-on-call firefighter in that role at a higher rate of pay than what was established by the city council for paid-on-call firefighters in the city of Dayton. After consideration of the questions and allegations presented by council member Henderson, the city council concluded as follows: City funds were not expended unlawfully and did not exceed amounts approved in the city budget. Fire Chief Hendrickson had not exceeded his authority or breached any fiduciary duty, and no disciplinary action against Fire Chief Hendrickson or further consideration of the allegations or charges were warranted. Those are the summaries. So in addition to this information in the summaries, I also wanted to add some stuff. I've never liked the fact that employees' names are put on the agenda for these things. I didn't like it when we were looking at termination of an employee. I didn't like that. The problem is, it sounds, our attorney tells us that we are required to do that. I think it provides a perception that may not be warranted. So, and ever since these allegations were made by council member Henderson, we had to resolve these things. So the council needed to move forward as a governing body and address the issues as best we could and try to resolve whatever we could. It's hard to do that without violating open meeting law. Actually, it's impossible to do that unless you have a closed meeting. Under the open meeting law, we can't talk amongst ourselves or exchange emails or text messages, and hence that would be a violation of open meeting law also. So in most situations, we're stuck with having to talk in public meetings about topics that may imply some things that we don't necessarily want to imply at that point. The allegations made by council member Henderson could have been serious, but there was a lot of private personnel data involved, so we wanted to be able to talk about the details, but also respect the rights of the city administrator and the fire chief to keep their private personnel data private. And since allegations had been made, the situation met the criteria of the council to hold a closed meeting under the open meeting law. City administrator and the fire chief each had the option to open these, and I'm glad that we could respect their privacy even in that small way to keep them closed. So I've read the legal summaries of what the council concluded based on the information that was at the closed meeting, and I want to make it clear, the council concluded that neither Zach nor the chief did anything illegal. Mistakes were probably made along the way about needing to get city council approval before letting paid-on-call firefighters take on other duties, or needing to have formal approval of the job. Any mistakes that might have been made were not done with malice or the intent to defraud or mislead the city council or the public, and we are all human and we make mistakes. Those are learning, what you would call learning experiences. City money wasn't spent outside of budgeted amounts, and para firefighter relief association rules weren't violated. Neither Zach nor the chief were given any form of discipline related to the allegations. As far as the city council is concerned, the allegations are done. We want to move forward, try to make the fire department and the city as a whole function better. We will continue our discussions about the structure of the fire department for 2026. We're also going to work with the city attorney to update city code employment rules and to update city personnel policy so that we have clear guidance and this kind of thing doesn't happen again. And that is it. Does anybody have any comments? Okay, so that said, we can move on. All right, consent agenda. Need a motion of second?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I have a question about item K. So that's the tax forfeiture property. Just wondering, the EDA, right, we're turning it over to them as the intention, right? And as far as we know, we don't know what the redevelopment will look like, or we haven't had negotiations about any of that, just that the EDA wants to do some redevelopment, correct?
Yeah, you want to take it, John, or does not?
Yes, there's no redevelopment plans for that property.
And there has been no negotiations done or any other information's been shared about that? The idea from the EDA's perspective is to get the tax forfeiture parcel back on the tax roll, which is the same as the city's perspective as well, is to get the tax forfeiture parcel back on the tax roll to be able to help with taxes overall within the city, so.
This is just the first step in them being able to do something.
This does not give the rights to the EDA at this point. This just starts the process for us to reconvey the property to Hennepin County, and then they can give us a price back and whatever else it's going to cost us to do that process to get the property back into our name. In that time, the council can decide if they'd like to give that property to the EDA to be able to control, or if they'd like to hold that onto as the city council.
Does the EDA have the power to reconvey?
They do not when it's our, it's our property, not they need it.
Mayor, if I could, right now, the parcel is owned by the city under Commissioner's deed or a special use deed, which limits the uses for it to what's listed in the deed when it was conveyed to the city. So the first step, as Y'all said, is to convey it back to the state, and then that will open up the opportunity for the city to acquire it under the tax forfeiture statute. There are a couple of different ways to do that.
It just seems, I guess, maybe peculiar to me that we would go through that process or start that process if we don't have an intention for it. So like if the EDA has a, like they want to do X, Y, or Z, and so I understand that we have to go through this process with Hennepin County to then be able to, you know, we have to buy it for whatever that price is, and then if the EDA wanted to redevelop it, they would have to then decide what they're going to do with it. It just seems.
Premature?
Yeah, if you do not have a plan, or, I mean, maybe they do. I don't know, that's why I'm asking, is if we take it with Hennepin County, we pay for it, and then we don't have anything to do with it, we own it then, right? And aren't we paying?
Well, it seems like what I've seen on that, no.
Yeah, we wouldn't pay taxes.
What I've seen is with these things, always seems to be that first step to get it done with, and had we done that with all of these properties from the get-go, I think financially we would have been much better off, because they're sitting down nothing anyways. So like that triangle, had we actually moved on that way early, we probably could have gotten it a lot cheaper than what we did.
Like, I guess I understand what you're saying, but the triangle was arguably going to be worth a lot more because of its location than, I guess, I don't have a problem with it per se, I'm just wondering, like, the EDA obviously has said something about wanting to redevelop it at their meeting on the 9th, right, or do something with it?
It was a very short conversation.
I'm sure they do.
There's a plan, is all I want to know.
Not about a plan, but because of our passion, yeah.
Sure, well, you know, discussion is really, I guess, just broader at this point. Nothing can be done with it, except for this single use that's described in the deed.
Or, yeah.
Some public use.
Or something, I don't know, but not anything that the city would pursue. And so the, really, it's just the logical first step to get it moved into a position back to the council, right, to decide, do we want to then reconvey it, or however we say that, to the EDA, that's another decision point. And then the EDA would then have the ability to redevelop it, but then there's still zoning questions, redevelop it into what? Right, so I think there's many steps along the way, this is just the first one, but I think the intent ultimately is that that's a residential area would be, continue that residential building on that empty lot.
I do have a question. Right now, we, so the city, in this moment, the city owns it, and we can do things like build a water tower on it, correct?
No.
No.
Okay. The only use that the city can do, can make of it at this moment is what's listed on the use deed from the commissioner.
And what is that?
I believe it's a parking lot.
And that's it?
Right, so one of the, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I was going to say, this is a long process, and as Councilmember Fashion says, there are lots of decision points along the way, and so it's, you know, like, for example, the city negotiated the reconvance and repurchase of the triangle parcel, what, three or four months ago, and we still haven't been able to complete that because we're waiting for Hennepin County to do the, to take the next steps, well, the state and Hennepin County. So it's a long process, there may still be time to develop a plan, a specific plan, and I don't know that there's a specific plan for the triangle parcel, and we're in the middle of that process too. So it's not, I don't know if premature is the word, it's just kind of, you got to start momentum somewhere, I guess.
I was just asking because we're doing the water study in there, and it's like, well, if we have this plot and we could, and, because I know in the other one, it was just, it has to be a public use, like, so that's why I was wondering, if a water tower would have counted, we're doing this whole water study, I would say let's hold just until we know.
Really tall waterfall.
I don't know. I mean, to your point, Sarah, in the council packet, it does say that the city has the ability to use the property for a public use without charge, like, i.e. water tower.
So we'd have to, I'm sorry to interrupt you, you would have to, still have to reconvey it to the state and get a new Commissioner's deed for that special use if it were to be used as a, for a different public use.
The cost would be $0. We just call it a repurpose of that property.
Okay, and from what I read, I thought the same thing, so I was like, you know, if the EDA doesn't have a definite plan, like, I thought the same thing as you, like, maybe we, there's another use for it.
But it sounds like no matter do that.
What, we'd still have to start this process?
We'd have to do the process. So we're giving ourselves the most flexibility, we're going down the path of least regret, and then we've got the options. Okay, that's fine with me, sorry to.
This is not approving the purchase of it back yet, so.
We don't know what we purchase it for.
No idea.
Makes sense to me.
And so if they came back to us and said, yeah, you can have it back for a million dollars, and we're like, you know what, we'll take it for free and put a water tower there after all, like, that is still on the table at that point. Okay, then I'm fine with it.
Great, thank you.
I'm fine with all of that, except the water tower part.
Well, yes.
At the bottom of a hill.
Not a great location.
It just was the example and the thing, it's just in my head.
Any other discussion items?
I guess we're still on consent. I had a couple, one, in item A with the minutes, on page 12, it, there's a section that says council commented on, and this is related to the Mississippi River Regional Trail, and I think the way, and I know AI just does this, right, but the way that it's written, I think, could end up being misleading. It says council commented on, and then there's a bunch of bullet points, and one of them is properties in future are allowed to be purchased. We certainly talked about that, but the way that's written could suggest to somebody in 10 years that we were in favor of that somehow. Also, on the third bullet point, it says tax purposes for easement or right-of-way and affecting property owners. I know we talked about, we talked about the tax impact of that, but you don't get that out of the way that's written, so I think that could be, could be said better.
Try to amend those things, adjust them, but.
To me, for the purchased properties, we said we would consider them on a case-by-case basis, so.
Yeah, so, I was gonna say, right, some of the old properties can be discussed to be purchased.
Case-by-case, based on potential other land use.
For the trail or something to that effect.
Yeah, the way this is, where did I agree with you, Dave, it sounds like we would be okay with anything, that's how it sounds.
And, you know, as time passes, people look back at the minutes, it's hard, you can lose that intent, I think. On page 32, item H, there's a pay-up request, request two and final for territorial road water main extension, and I'm wondering why the final amount is different than the contract amount, even though we are, it accounted for change orders, so I don't know where the tilt is there.
Yeah, so on that one, it was a little bit unique, we had some extra work on there associated with a hydrant that was built into a hillside, if you will. We had to take more of the material out of the hillside to accommodate the hydrant location. We had work provisions in the contract for the seeding, the blanketing, the restoration, all of the other work associated with it, but not for the removal of material offsite. So a change order was required to introduce that new type of work into the contract and covered under that change order, but for the other work in there, it was already part of the contract, we just exceeded the estimated quantities for those items. So we were able to accomplish compensation through the existing contract.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's all I had on consent.
Anybody else? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Four to zero, consent is approved. Open forum, anybody here for open forum? Come on forward. Limited to three minutes for non-agenda items, state your name and address, no council action will be taken, items will be referred back to staff.
Brian Harvey, address 17730 Dayton River Road, just looking to have my property looked at for the case-by-case basis on Three Rivers Parks, potentially acquiring them or making an offer when we would like to sell.
What's your address, 17730?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Did you have a timeline, or you like?
Not really, we're just kind of planning for the future, kind of, you know, we'd like to be out with them a year or so, so it's just kind of getting what our options are, so.
Is there a reason you wouldn't consider just selling it through the normal channels?
We are considering that too, we just want to have all the options on the table. I know they've acquired the properties next to us and the property next to that, so, you know, it kind of makes sense, like, if there was to be a larger structure there, you know, it's just us and then one other house between that and a parcel of state-owned property, so, you know, just seeing what the options are and kind of giving thought to everything, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And Brian, can you fill out that form, and then make sure you put your contact information on there?
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum?
Brian, you want to step back and hand it to us in a second? You're okay. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Dan Pearson and my wife Debbie. We live at 13880 Dayton River Road, right next to Cloke Park. We recently learned about the trail that would come through our property and wanted to explain why this creates serious concern for us. We have about 43 feet behind our house that goes to a drop-off, we're basically on a bluff. Out of that 43 feet, our septic takes up most of that, so it would make it impossible for the trail to run behind our house, so that leaves only in the front of our property. Taking into consideration that the county already has 45-foot easement to the edge of the road, not to the middle of the road, this would put the trail in front of our house, and for us, that's not workable. We moved from our last home because they put a trail through the front, it was a quiet road, 30 miles an hour, next door, someone pulling out hit someone on a bike. My wife nearly hit somebody pulling out of the driveway. Dayton River Road is very difficult, it's much different, it's a busy road, it keeps getting busier as the new homes are being built. Our property is right between, well, there's a sharp curve between our property and Cloke Park. Our mailbox got hit nine times the first year we were there. I'm sure you're all aware of how busy Dayton River Road can be. We already get honked at trying to turn in our own driveway. Pulling out of our driveway is even more challenging. We got to look to the left, to the right, three, four times, and then we got to floor it and hope that somebody's not right behind us. You start adding bikes, pedestrian, e-bikes that go 28 miles an hour, if they're altered, they can go up to 50 miles an hour, that adds another layer of probable accidents. We bought this as a retirement home. I'm 71, we'd rather move now than wait four years or so for the project to begin and then have to move in my mid-70s. So we'd like to ask you for your approval to allow Three Rivers to buy us out. So, we'd like to ask you for your approval to allow Three Rivers to buy us out. This would allow us to relocate to a safer, more desirable place. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Dan, you wanna fill one of those out? Dan, can you fill one of those out for us? Fill one of those out for us, I said, yep. You can drop it out with the chief. Thank you so much.
Anybody else here for open forum?
Lee Holquist, 11471 Fernbrook Lane, and I don't have a lot to complain about, but I got some concerns about this Rush Creek intersection, and I don't know if it's part of the traffic study or what, but the, the right turn lanes, north and south, are blocked off now, and so it's, there's no right turn lanes, I guess, if you're coming out, at least as I see it. And, this morning, it took me 20 minutes to get from my house down to 81. You come up from the, from Rush Creek there, and traffic is just blocked, backed up, it's just poorly done, poorly laid out. People trying to get into the roundabout from the, from the north and from the west were backed up almost a quarter mile, it just, it's not a good design for whoever did that.
Which, which roundabout?
That roundabout at Territorial, it's in Maple Grove.
Oh, yep, okay.
Okay, for the new road that, that you guys didn't do, and, and I defend you for that, but, it, it's just gotten worse. I know there's being a tra, a traffic study being done, and I don't know if that's why the right turn lanes are shut down, but it's just getting nuttier. Traffic is backed way up to the stop signs, and, and I appreciate the stop signs, but it's, it's just, something's not working there. Like I said, it, 20 minutes to get down to Fernbrook, I live two miles north of 81, and it took 20 minutes this morning, that's just not reasonable, even if it was 7:20 in the morning. But anyway, and then the other thing, I understand that Elm Creek Park Reserve is gonna cut out that lot on the, be the southeast corner of Fernbrook, sometime next month, they're just gonna eliminate that parking lot, and my wife talked to Three Rivers Park District yesterday, they're gonna eliminate ax, trail access from there, so basically, that, that nice new crosswalk's gonna just end when you get to the green spot, there's no trail there, there's no access there, or there will be no access there. And I don't know, when she talked, when Linda talked to Three Rivers yesterday, said the city didn't respond to anything when they asked for input what they wanted, if, if there was any reason to keep that trail access open or not, we use that trail access every week, at least once or twice a week, we're in there almost every day. It looks like it's, it's gonna eliminate a whole lot of stuff for utility value for us, and I know the people that bought those houses in Sundance Greens and all that, were told that Elm Creek Park Reserve is one of the selling points there, only now you have to drive there. They, they told Linda we'd have to wa, that if you wanted to get there from Fernbrook, you'd have to walk there, on the, on the street, there's not gonna be a, a walking path in there anymore that's accessible, and I, I don't know if you guys know anything about it, they said you didn't respond to it, and they made a big point of saying that, so.
That's the path that goes to the parking lot, the little parking lot?
Yeah, that little parking lot will be gone, and the path to it will be gone, they said, so.
Yeah, but like, when, when did they, did, I don't recall.
Starting, either it's October 6th or October 20th, they got two steps that they're doing.
I'm just saying, I don't recall ever hearing before this, a chance to respond.
I don't, I don't know, I'm not on either side here, except that we use the park, we use the park reserve, like I say, almost daily.
I know, we, we've had conversations with Three Rivers about the elimination of the, the small parking lot, once the...
Yeah, we call it the trail access.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember the trail discussion.
I think, it's, we had a conversation with them at one of the quarterly meetings that we have with them, and we asked them specifically about the trail there, and the trail access was gonna stay, and they assured me that the trail access was gonna stay there. They were gonna eliminate the parking lot, because they're expanding the parking lot elsewhere.
They, they told us yesterday that, that the crosswalk would be the end of it, there was, wasn't gonna be anything coming in from that.
That was my understanding of the conversation, who did you speak to at Three Rivers?
I don't remember who you talked to, because my wife called them.
Okay, if you can get me the name, we can, I can follow up with that.
Okay, other than that, like I say, traffic is getting to be a ginormous pain in the butt here, and, and, I don't, whoever did that is just poorly laid out, so I saw that, after it was five weeks old, they already resurfacing part of that road, and it just, I don't know. Anyway, that's all I got, other than that, life is good, guys, I appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
And I'll fill out the little form.
Thank you.
I'll provide an update to the council after.
Okay. By the way, before I forget, that open utility box, that, actually, Keith was complaining about last time, it's still open, so I don't know if that's something we have to contact him about, or, it's right on the east side of that intersection.
Is that at 113?
Huh?
113?
No, it's at Elm Creek Road, it's...
It's next to the trail that Lee was just talking about.
It's, yeah.
It's on the county right-of-way.
That's a county item.
On the southeast corner of that intersection.
Yeah, it's, and like I said, I don't know if we can do anything about it, but I have feeling somebody opened it and totally forgot about it. But, yeah, you can walk into that thing, and you're gonna snap your leg off.
Okay. Jason, you wanna follow up with the county?
Great.
Yeah, we'll try to find who owns it.
Perfect, thank you.
Go ahead. I wanna, I didn't know anything about this issue that Lee just brought up, but frankly, it kind of irritates me that they're taking away that, that park access, parking there, because anyone that lives in that, that housing development that we just built thousands of homes in, that doesn't wanna tracks all the way through the trails in the development, you know, drives out there and uses that parking lot to park in to get onto the trail, I mean, that's why the parking lot was built there in the first place, that's why the trail was built close to the road, so that could have a parking lot, so people would have access to the bike and the walking trail, so it just, I don't understand why, why Three Rivers, or Hennepin County, or whoever's pulling the strings there, would want to remove that parking lot, and I know they just spent tons of money down at the nature center, one, completely repaving the road in and out of there, that looked like a perfectly good road to me, repaved the parking lot that looked just fine to me, they added another parking lot in their overflow area that was just grass parking, that I don't, I've never seen anybody parking it before, unless they had an event down there, but they just spent literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in pavement down there, and I was kind of curious why they hadn't repaved that one, cause it seems like they repaved all the ones going into Champlin, but I don't, that's not why I came here. Keith Grover, 113th and Fernbrook. What I wanted to bring up tonight is, is the holding pond, it's at DCM, the new holding pond that's right at 113th and Fernbrook, all the water from that whole development now is, is now channeled into that holding pond, that's, if it's full, it's probably 25 feet deep, but, it's not full yet. But the south side of that pond, that faces 113th, towards Dean's Country Manor, the south side of that pond is a straight-cut wall that has a six-to-eight-foot drop-off, straight down, and the other sides of the pond are all graded with a, you know, with a, maybe a 40-degree, 45-degree slope, and it's clearly the, the way they plan on leaving it for the winter, because they've blown seed and straw over everything except the south side that has that drop, and that drop is probably 15 or 20 feet off the asphalt of 113th.
Yeah, didn't even look back that far, but, yeah, it does look dangerous.
It's very close, I've got a picture out if you, if you wanna see it, but it's, it's too close to the road, it's just a few feet inside of the silt fence they have up, you know, that we make them put up, so that the debris doesn't run off the property. This whole thing is scary, I mean, Zach and I talked about this, and he didn't think that there was an ordinance that they were violating within the city, I guess my question is, if developers can do something like that, and make such an unsafe condition in the city, if there isn't an ordinance that covers that, maybe we would, should think about doing that, that they should be required to commit to keeping their job site safe, not only for the workers that are working there, obviously, but for the children in the area, we've got a whole development there that's full of kids, and they're always running up and down that road, riding their bikes up and down that road, they don't all know that that eight-foot drop is there, I wouldn't wanna fall off from that, and I wouldn't wanna fall off that as an, as an adult, I'd hate to see some little kid go off that.
I was surprised they were able to get it, cause there must be a lot of clay right there.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, 18 inches down, it's solid clay, yeah. But anyway, I mean, it's kind of a personal issue for me, not because of the developer or anything, but because I got hurt in a project like that when I was like eight years old, and, at the time, it was at the Dayton Trailer Park, they had two streets there, Auburn and Burns, and they were adding on everything north of there, you know, Crestwood, Deerwood, all the way, they added on probably 200 more lots. While they were doing that, there was a playground that used to be in the center of Burns on the north side, swings, teeter-totters, monkey bars, maypole, all the kinds of things that, when I was little, the kids used to love to play on. They got mad that people were driving out where they were digging their trenches with cars, I don't know why they were doing, I was a kid, right? So, in their infinite wisdom, they decided they're gonna run a wire across there to keep cars from going out there. Well, the wire that they ran across there was a barbed wire, and they ran it across, and they ran out of posts in the middle, what do you think they tied that barbed wire off to? They tied it off to the monkey bars in the playground. Those of us that are kids running around, being used to playing in that playground, day and night, we forgot they put the wire up, I ran into that wire, and I caught it right across my chin and across my neck. I ended up at North Memorial Hospital that night in, in the emergency room, because they thought, I, my brother thought I ripped half my head off. But when you're talking about keeping a work area like that safe for kids, it kind of hits home for me, you know, see dumb things like that happening, what's going on in that development right now with that holding pond, to me, is just plain stupid, it's, it's creating an accident, just waiting for some little kid to wander over from Dean's Country Manor, which they do quite often, kid, mom and dad are done eating, kids go out in the parking lot, and they kind of wander out there, maybe they don't live in the country all the time, they wander out there, and they step over this little silt fence that's like 18 inches high, and they take another five steps, and they're down eight feet into a hole, I just think there should be something that we should be able to do about that. I, I'm not sure what that would be, but I just wanted to bring it to your guys' attention, because you're the ones that can actually do something about it, so, that's all I have tonight.
All right, thanks. Anybody else for open forum? Anybody online?
So, if you're here for open forum, and you're able to hear us, use the raise your hand function, I believe we're having some audio issues, but I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I wanna follow up one thing with the council for the parking lot thing, so that everyone's aware.
Sure.
So, the improvements that Keith had mentioned for the improvements at the Eastman Nature Center are the reasons why that other parking lot is going away, is cause they want to ensure that people have a bathroom and other available facilities for them, so they expanded the parking lot at the Eastman Nature Center to be able to accommodate more cars than that current little tiny parking lot was able to do, and that would obviously put them closer to the bathroom and other handicap-type facilities, so, the reason for that is, they did all the work on that Eastman Nature Center to expand it, so that they could remove that other parking lot off of there, and then not have the two parking lots that were close enough together, they just wanted to have one large parking lot for everybody to use. So, that's why that's being utilized, I'm not aware of them removing the trail access, so we will verify that that is not removed, cause it shouldn't be, I do know that long-term, they may be looking to remove that trail access point, that will be once their legacy project of a underground tunnel at the bottom of the dip, past the Rush Creek Parkway and going south towards 81, they're supposed to put an underpass basically underneath there, and that'll be a trail that'll connect up into Sundance Greens Development, inside the development, basically dead center of that development, Sundance Woods, Sundance Greens area. So, I believe likely, the answer of them cutting the trail off is going to be, once that legacy project happens, they don't want people then crossing at an unsafe crossing if they can cross at an underpass, so.
How far away is the underpass from the current?
From my understanding, it's two to three years out.
Physically, how far away?
Two to three years out.
No, physically.
Oh, physically far away, sorry. It's supposed to raise the entire, so they're gonna redo the bridge at the bottom of that hill, and they're supposed to raise the bridge and the pavement up at the same point, so it's supposed to be basically at that bridge, which is, I don't know how many feet south of Rush Creek Parkway and Elm Creek Parkway on Fernbrook.
It's about 2,000 feet.
There you go, 2,000 feet.
So, half a mile.
Yep, and it's supposed to then connect up into the development, so it'll actually connect up almost dead center into Sundance Woods, Sundance Greens. That's, that's my guess related to removing of the trail, but, we can confirm.
The underpass will technically be in Maple Grove?
Yes, the underpass will be in Maple Grove, it is a legacy project for Elm Creek Park Reserve.
So, does Dayton have any access points left in the park, then?
There would be, yeah, Elm Creek Road would have their access points, like Eastman Nature Center and such, but no, there would be no access points from a neighborhood currently into the Elm Creek Park Reserve in Dayton at that point. Well, there's, on the north side, there is ones, there's ones on Johnquill here.
Two.
Johnquill, yeah, on the north side there, sorry about that.
But that doesn't, yeah, help these guys.
Up here.
Just, just for the record, that tunnel that they're talking about putting under 121, that's the tunnel that Tom Dean wanted to pay to put in, and the park wouldn't give him access on their side of the road to put it in, so now, the county, all of a sudden, has all this money to put that in, when we could've had that paid for by the developer, he wanted to do it, it was part of his project to do it, and we should be asking Hennepin County, why are they spending our tax dollars when they told us the developer that was building all the homes out there wanted to do it, and they wouldn't let him do it? That's insane.
Are you gonna send Kevin's, Kevin's number?
It won't be, it won't be Hennepin County paying.
I've got his number, thanks.
It won't be Hennepin County paying for the project, Three Rivers Park District will pay for that project, but they'll do it in tandem with the bridge project that Hennepin County is doing at that time, but.
Still tax dollars.
It is still tax dollars, you are correct.
Okay. On to staff consultant and council.
Yes, good evening, mayor, members of council, I've had, heard from a few of you related to the Maple Grove water discussion, various responses, and it sounds like it's not gonna work as a work session on the night of the 14th any longer, no matter what, we would like to have everybody involved, and we have another council member who's not gonna be here at the 14th meeting, is there sometime the week of October 20th through the 24th that works for you guys to meet? I would anticipate this to be about a two-and-a-half hour discussion, that's my presumption, I don't know if it will be that long or not, but my guess is there'll be more questions than answers.
One of the things that I've been, so I occasionally talk to the, a couple of the council members over there, they're deciding questions on their capacity before they decide the softener question, the softened water question, which seems totally, that's backwards, because...
I know that.
If, if they go softener, we're probably out. Don't know that for a fact, but, well, that's gonna affect our capacity numbers by, you know, a good amount, it just seems backwards, I don't understand what they're doing.
Yeah, this conversation obviously is not gonna affect our current agreement with Maple Grove, but it will shape what it looks like in the future, and I want to ensure that we're giving correct information in Maple Grove, so, I don't presume it to be one answer or the other answer, I presume it to be multiple answers depending on what Maple Grove does.
If they do X, we'll do Y.
If they do X, this is what we're going to do, yes, and we'll provide all the information that we have from Maple Grove, so you guys have educated information, I've done that, tried to do that already, but, the main thing for me at this point is just getting a meeting scheduled so that we can have a conversation as a group.
What dates did you say, the 20th or?
I just picked October 20th through the 24th, so.
I teach a night class on Monday and Wednesday nights, so I'm not available any Monday or Wednesday night, those are just straight out for me, but I could do...
That Tuesday?
I could do it, it's technically my wedding anniversary, but it's okay, so we don't do anything anyway.
Well, yeah, at least you remember yours. Me or my wife don't.
It's not, it's not a deal breaker by any stretch, so, so I could do the 21st or the 23rd.
Yeah, I'm the same.
23rd or 24th for me.
I can do the 24th also, but that's Friday night.
I mean, yeah, I also don't have a life, so I could do that too.
Just tell me when to be here.
I'm gonna speak up behalf of city staff and go, we don't wanna be here on a Friday night, I love you guys very much, but I do not wanna be on a Friday night.
No sacrifice.
I, I know, I will say that we'll try to tentatively plan for the 23rd, if possible, if it does not work, we will make it the 24th, if that works for everybody up here, as a secondary date.
Would that be the normal time of a work session?
We can make it whatever time you guys would like it to be, if you wanna make it a 5:30 start, that's great, if you wanna make it a 3 o'clock start, that's fine too, whatever you guys want. It's totally up to you all, so, if I have a date at least, then I can narrow... If I have a date at least, then I can narrow down times, and I can send out just a, hey, this is, tell me what time works. We can make an evening work or a day work, whatever. Okay. October 20th.
3rd.
3rd.
Thursday.
Thank you.
You don't.
Yep, thank you very much, sorry.
I don't have anything.
Marty. What did they tell you about texting and driving?
I was looking at October 2030, what I had on.
Of course.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Just a couple of updates. Wellhead Treatment Plant, the masons have finally finished their work in a offsite, and they're continuing the pipe work on the inside. Next two weeks, looks like the water hookup for the raw water will be completed, and there's a culvert realignment to do under the driveway, which they will work out in the next two weeks. Parks, I own gardens, the hydro seeding on there will be complete tomorrow. Sundance Greens, the hydro seeding will be completed there by the end of this week. Area 21 sport courts and parking lot being paved tomorrow, trails on Thursday, irrigation being installed currently, and the trees I'm anticipating getting installed in two weeks. Last time we had a presentation on the DNR boat landing, the concept there, there was a couple of questions about the location of the handicap parking. The reason for the location is it's closest to the launch. It minimizes travel distance for disabled users of the facility. The location was selected by the DNR during concept development so that the connection from ADA parking to the ramp was a better, longer lasting service than regular asphalt. So, and there's a bunch of other ADA compliant things that go in.
Oh, is that cement?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. And then the other question was about how much space is used for strengthening and backing up the boat. The total length of space of pulling up and then backing down the launch is about 150 feet, as the design shows. The boat trailer size utilized for sizing the site and evaluating the necessary turning movements was a vehicle and trailer length of 50 feet by 10 foot wide. This is also the maximum size that would fit within the parking stalls as proposed on the site, and it is slightly above and beyond Minnesota DNR's typical standard for their launch facilities. So it's a little bigger than they normally use. Just a fun fact on water, I did a little bit of research on what we did. In March this year, we pumped 8,964,000 gallons. In July, we pumped 30,790,000 gallons, the difference of $21,826,000.
And it all went out in the grass.
Just on the grass. So I just thought I'd share that with you guys.
Jason, we got to fix that.
Let the clover and the dandelions grow, they don't need as much water.
Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Sunday, October 5th, is Fire Department's open house from 11 to 2. And then, I'm just curious, Zach or Amy, for planning purposes for emergency management, the next council meeting after the 28th is Veterans Day. Will that get moved? November 11th.
Yes, it'll be moved because we could not conduct official city business on a federal holiday.
Okay.
So we will need to move that date. So council, you want to do that now? We can do that now too. I don't know if you want to do that now or not, but.
What day was that?
November 11th is the first meeting in November, so we can move it the day before.
I can't do Mondays and Wednesdays, so it would have to be the week before, the 4th?
I don't know if we want to do it the week before because that only.
Yeah, then we got to mess with the flames and stuff.
We could do Thursday the 13th.
I can do whatever.
I could do Thursday the 13th, I don't know. Do we want to wait though, because Scott's not here? Do we want to wait till Scott's here to decide that one?
Yeah, maybe we should do that.
We can do that too, that's fine.
Well, and do you want to just email us? We can email your availability.
Good question, chief, thank you.
Chief.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. We survived all the events this weekend, no issues. It was great to see everybody, had a good time. Grade was good. Second thing is, is we've got a good offer from Hennepin County. We've been trying to get involved in their special operations unit for quite a while, and recently they have reached out to Champlin, us, and the city of Corcoran to join their, have an officer join their special operations unit, other than on their SWAT. So we have one officer interested in taking this on. It's an on-call position. They'd only be called out when needed. And the first year is basically training for this officer to be involved in. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
John?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the council for attending the open house for states manufacturing last week, and we might have a picture on the site. So this is what a half million square feet looks like. So these are the larger containers that are, this is the reason why state is leasing a large building, is so they can build buildings within buildings. So, thank you.
Just to add to that, I asked a question about those, those switchgear houses, and they said that order was for 82 of those.
Wow. And they're probably not cheap. Jason?
A couple of updates along Fernbrook and Rush Creek Parkway, just because there's been discussion even tonight, but there's been some calls from the residents. One regarding the stop signs or the intersection of Rush Creek Road. We are of the understanding that the intention is to permanently close those turn lanes. We have requested additional discussion on that with the county. We haven't yet scheduled anything, but we would like to talk to them more about that. But that is, that is the plan, as is consistent with what they did in the city of Champlin on the Hayden Lake Road. The other one, if folks have noticed a camera or cameras out on the roadway there, there's been some questions, why are those out there? Hennepin County crews are actually collecting traffic data for our use in the study. So they have put cameras out there just to record data, and then once it's all collected, those will be removed.
What turn lanes are they?
The right.
Right turn lanes.
The right turn lanes.
Yeah.
I think it's because people don't understand four-way stops in general, and if you've got too many lanes happening, people are just dumb.
They're dumb.
I might use a different description, but it is exactly, I think, what you mean by that. With that many cars approaching and that many lanes, it's difficult for drivers to determine who goes next in order of operations. So reducing the number of lanes reduces driver confusion, at least in theory, and makes it easier for it to function.
That sounds way nicer than what I said, yes.
That was a lot of money put into that. Okay. Amy?
No report from me.
I've got a couple of things, two are just checking in on. I know Planning Commission, it came up a couple of different times, and I feel like it's come up at city council to revisit our landscaping requirements, particularly in regards to shrubs. I think it's a ridiculously high number and doesn't make any sense. I'm just wondering if that, if there's any progress on that or where that is in the process.
Yeah, so a part of the Planning Commission, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a part of the Planning Commission agenda in October is going to be a discussion on a couple of items that have been kind of a front at meetings. It is going to also be a little bit of a clarifier to the landscaping standards. That is kind of an either or option if you can't meet the tree standards. So it's not necessarily that's what is required for all developments. It's more of a, if you can't meet the standards that are required for trees, then you have to supplement the site with shrubs. So that summary will be a part of that, and we can certainly either provide that as an update to the council at the following meeting or send out in an email just to summarize what the conversation will be at the October meeting.
Awesome, thank you. Next one was, we had, Stephanie brought it up initially about getting the fire and, well, basically all Dayton vehicles marked clearly so that people know. Just wondering where that is in that process.
Yep, it's in line currently, so just waiting on the slot to come up and be filled, so.
Okay, but it's happening.
It is happening, yep.
Okay.
Do we get a price on that?
I'm going to go, Chief Hennepin.
Just wondering how much it.
You know what the price was?
I do not. They're working on a markup or a visual, and they have not provided a quote yet.
Okay. Thank you. And then lastly, I had a chance to meet with John Hayden to talk about ensuring our city maintains a variety of housing options to meet people at various stages of their housing journey, from first time home buyers to people who are wanting to like, you know, empty nesters who might want to downsize a little bit, maybe have less maintenance, but don't necessarily want to be in an association where they give up all their, like, rights to what their yard looks like and things like that. It was a really good conversation. I think we got a lot of ideas, and we all kind of have, we gave ourselves homework, so that, we're by no means done. But I just wanted to let you know that we had that conversation, and I'm excited to think about how we can do that. One of the things that came up, and Dave, I think this was something you brought up at a meeting, was how do we preserve our current homes to make sure that they stay marketable and sellable and usable and not necessarily purchased and then torn down and like a brand new house is built up right again, right? Like, so, yeah, we're exploring a lot of different options, and it was a really good conversation. Those are my updates.
I wanted to thank staff for all the help with Heritage Day. It went well. It was fun, a lot of people showed up, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Nothing from me today.
Nothing from me.
Okay, we are on to item L.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have been contacted by a couple of farmers that had concerns about franchise fees that were being charged to, for their natural gas grain dryers when dryers weren't in use. It's easier to kind of explain the story. So we have three large, we're not going to refer to as three larger farming operations in Dayton, two that use natural gas grain dryers, and the third that uses an electric irrigation system. The gas drain, drain, grain dryers are customers of CenterPoint Energy. In order for them to turn their dryers on, dryers, not grain dryers, in the fall, they notify CenterPoint Energy three days ahead of time. CenterPoint comes out, turns on the meter, the dryer's used, and then they lock the meter for the rest of the season. And then franchise fees would be charged on the months where the grain dryers are in use. There was some hassle with that, and so CenterPoint had applied to the Public Utilities Commission to allow the grain dryers to just be on, or I shouldn't say on, but have gas running to the meters 12 months of the year. Unintended consequence was that, with that, is that the franchise fee would then be charged 12 months of the year, even when the dryers are not in use. So the fix to this is a request to the city council to exempt agricultural drain, grain dryers from paying the franchise fees. So this would be a reduction of, thought I had it on here, about $3,000 a year in lost franchise fee revenue. Should note that this is, affects the two farm operations that are CenterPoint Energy customers, does not affect any other utility company. So we still have another farmer that's using electricity from Conexus for an irrigation system. My understanding from Conexus is that they charge a franchise fee during the six month growing season, which you could still use the irrigation system for, throughout the growing season. So it is not an apples to apples comparison between the two different utility types.
So that loss you're talking about, though, that's.
I want to make one clarifying thing for the mayor and the council. It is not a loss of $3,000.
That's.
It is a loss of $600 currently, because we do not currently collect $152 per month for each grain dryer that's in the city.
It would be nine grand if we didn't make a change.
Yeah, we currently only collect $600 a year roughly from the current system that we've had in the past, so. We, when we say exempt them, we're not exempting $3,000, we're exempting $600 total.
And it's total across two or three?
That is two different, two different operations that use it for two months out of the year. So if you have $152 a month, times by two is 300, sort of similar to $300 a month, and they use it for two months. It's $600 for the year. That's what we're asking for.
I'm fine with that.
Any questions for staff?
Only thing we need to make sure we do is close the public hearings. This is a continuation of the public hearing from the last council meeting. So you need to make sure you open it again or ask to open it. I don't know how that works. It's already opened.
It's still open, okay. So we're closing the one that, okay.
Given that it's still a public meeting, I would assume we have to ask for any input?
Yep.
Any concerns, any questions? I will close the meeting then.
The open.
The open meeting.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yes. Okay. Any other comments? I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion?
You can comment?
I will, but it can happen after the motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, good.
So in reading how this process works, it sounds like there's some delays because this has to be passed around to other entities, and they have 90 days or something like that to respond, and so it pushes the implementation date out a ways.
But probably, yeah, till next year.
Next year. But in the meantime, they would be charging this franchise fee even past the grain drying season, which is kind of the next two months or so. And so I guess my question is, this, this is revenue that comes back to the city. Is it possible or reasonable even that we would, in this interim, and our intent is to not charge this anymore, correct, that that money could then be refunded until we get this ordinance finally blessed by everybody that needs to look at it and in play?
Can we justify that?
If the council, if the council feels that that's the real, the right thing to do, then yeah, we can.
Once the season, once the grain drying season is done.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we, they would be charged for the two months that normally they would get charged for, and then anything above and beyond that, we would refund.
Whatever time passes until we get this thing finally.
Does it say next year? You're talking about next January or next year?
I'm going to say January, January.
I guess it doesn't matter, yeah. It seems like we should just, yeah, refund that after those two months. Does that make sense?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Do we need, understand what we need then?
Yep.
Okay.
You have to see it on the payment of claims like any other payments.
Any other comments? Okay, we got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. carries four to zero.
Thank you.
On to item M. Thanks, guys. Did that pretty easy.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a public hearing to consider Resolution 63-2025 approving a drainage and utility easement vacation on Outlet A, Dayton Fields Fourth Edition. This is a little bit backwards in the way that this will get addressed, but it is in connection to the next item that you'll see on the agenda. Essentially, as a formality, because this property was previously platted, the vacation of the easements that were previously established need to be removed as they will be essentially reestablished with the new plat. So that is the request. Obviously, the vacation of the drainage and utility easements currently, excuse me, is contingent on approval of the final plat.
So it's not like we would say vacate them, and then when the next item comes up, they can be like, ha ha, just kidding, peace out, like, it wouldn't?
Correct. This resolution would be recorded at the, at Hennepin County prior to the final plat being recorded. So essentially, it would go as a, as a package.
Okay.
Any questions for staff?
Nope.
Okay, I will open up the public hearing. Anybody want to speak to this? I will, is there nobody online that wants to deal with this? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Carries four to zero. And we are on to item N.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As I mentioned before, tonight you're asked to consider the approval of a couple of resolutions tonight. One for preliminary and final plat approval of Dayton Fields Fifth Edition, as well as a resolution for a conditional use permit for outdoor storage as an accessory use and site plan approval for development application by Rogers Ops LLC. So this actually is a continuation of a project that you had seen on a concept level in June of 2025. The property is along, adjacent to 121st Avenue North and West French Lake Road. The overall site is eight and a half acres and is currently that outlot that you just motioned to vacate the easements on. Property is guided for an industrial use and currently zoned I-1 and is also in the current staging area for the sewer service. The site, if you, any, a couple of you might remember, the site was previously approved for a similar use in 2023 that never proceeded with construction. So as I mentioned, the applicant is Rogers Ops LLC, but the business and the applicants and business owners are here for, for this application tonight and they can speak to it a little bit more. But Telcom Construction is a utility contractor that does right of way work all around the metro area and beyond. They are proposing a 26,000 square foot building, split between 8,000 square feet of office space and 18,000 square feet of warehouse and shop area. Both are permitted uses within the I-1 district. The single access that they are proposing is directly aligned with the Invent property right across the street. Employee and customer parking is located in the front of the building. And as I get into the site plan and show that and it was also in the packet, there is a section of private parking for the employees. The applicants have stated that the use of the parking area that is not open to the public is for employees that go on longer term work jobs that may be, that may last up to a week. And as I mentioned before, associated with this is roughly 36 and a half thousand square feet of outdoor storage space, 10,000 square feet, which is proposed to be asphalt surfacing, which is a slight reduction. Actually, I'm sorry, that is an increase in the asphalt area that was previously shown in the concept. And then the remaining area is proposed to be Class II aggregate, all of which is proposed to be fully screened by a fence and landscaping area on the outside of the fence. As you may recall, I believe it might have been July or August, the City Council adopted an ordinance amendment that allowed for surfacing materials in outdoor storage areas other than asphalt and concrete, which is, was kind of in connection to this concept at that time. So here's the overall site plan. You can see that it is very similar to what you saw at the concept stage. The applicants are proposing a fence line all the way around up to this parking lot that would essentially provide a gated barrier between the public parking and the private parking for employees. And then here is the area shown as the proposed Class II aggregate. Just to touch on the architecture, the architecture overall is consistent with the I-1 district requirements. It's a combination of concrete panels and metal finishing, including the accent materials that both are vertical and horizontal and complementary colors that will be shown here a little bit more detail. The signage is conceptual and they'll obviously have to pull a permit for that stuff, but just to orient everybody, this is the site looking south and you can see here is the Invent building and proposed access on the property. So just to run down some of the requirements for the I-1 district, the building setbacks, all front side and rear are all met related to the building as well as the parking with substantial separation from property lines on the street side of West French Lake Road as well as the rear yard. And here are the parking setbacks that are proposed. And here's just a rundown of the site layout for requirements in the I-1 district. All of these are met, including the outdoor storage coverage, which based on the current language in the I-1 district requirements is about half of what would be allowed otherwise. A major limitation to this is there's roughly two plus or minus acres of wetland on the property that would otherwise not allow for that to be used. So just to get into a little bit of the detail, the site plan shows 77 parking spaces. And for the city councils, understanding that requirements for office space is one space per 200 square feet and the shop area warehouse is one space per 2,000 square feet. Based on this calculation, they are well over the requirement for parking. And I would attribute that mainly to the use of that private parking area for employees as well as company vehicles. Not all of this area is open to the public, but it is still counted in that calculation. The landscaping numbers for the trees are compliant as well as they are including shrub counts. And a lot of that has to do with requirements related to an accent around the building that includes a decorative finish, usually a five foot wide strip that is required and that consists of whether it's rock, decorative rock and then shrubs that kind of soften that building wall when you're next to it. And then as well as they are proposing to include shrubs and trees along the outside of the proposed fence line to soften the look of that to the surrounding properties as well. There was a recommendation in the staff report that there was proposed to be a quantity of 20 worth of mountain ash trees. That has since been a request and a condition of approval in the site plan approval to remove those and swap those out with another tree species. The concern is really continuing to introduce more ash trees within the community and the Emerald Ash Bore that could potentially affect these. I know that in talks with Marty and the city arborist that while there may be more protections with these newer trees, newer trees, they still are susceptible to Emerald Ash Bore and could affect other trees within the community. So that would be a requirement. There was also after conversations with Marty and the city arborist that to remove or replace the overstory trees that are within the vicinity of, I think I can go back to this, within the vicinity of this, there is a sewer line, storm sewer?
Sanitary.
Sanitary sewer line that runs through this easement currently. And essentially what the conversation, I guess, brought forward was that the overstory trees could make the pipe more susceptible to rip damage versus evergreen trees or ornamental trees. So that would be another condition of approval to that as well. Let's see. And then just to note on the wetland buffer, in the concept plan, the wetland buffer was a little bit short on the square footage requirements and meeting that 25 foot average, the applicants have resolved that and have met the code standard for that. Now, there was a healthy conversation at the planning commission meeting regarding the fence line that was proposed on the front or that is proposed on the, the front property line to screen that parking area, that private parking area. Through the discussion, the applicant had stated that a lot of that reason for the opaque fence and not to be fully visible through that is for the security of people's personal properties while they're not on site. And throughout the discussion, there was some conversation related to whether they would be allowed to do so or if it should be fully visible to have full sight view as you're driving down 121st Avenue. Ultimately, the planning commission did vote four to one in improvement, in approval of this development proposal, understanding that, that the opaque fence for screening does serve a purpose in that specific area. And then just the conditional use permit, they also recommended approval and a couple of conditions that weren't originally in the resolution, one being limiting storage in the front area of the building to those vehicles at a height not to exceed 10 feet. And then anything in the rear yard, not necessarily vehicles, because there are going to be vehicles on this site that are taller than 10 feet, those would be stored in the rear yard or in the side yard adjacent to the building. The materials, however, that may be stacked or stored in that area would be limited to a height of 12 feet. And this is the proposed location of where the fence line is going to go. Originally, they had proposed it to go all the way out to this, almost all the way out to this property line, kind of following the easement on this property. And the planning commission did request that it be recessed to just the edge of the parking lot. So just in proximity to the sanitary sewer line, it is roughly seven and a half to eight feet away from that. And then two feet away from the curb that is on there to allow for an overhang on parking if necessary. So with that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
I got nothing. Anybody else have any?
I don't have any questions.
No.
All right, I have a motion in a second.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Motion carries forty zero.
Does that include the changes to the use permit stuff or no?
The condition, the conditions of approval were updated after the planning commission meeting and incorporated into the packet.
Okay, it's fun to make sure I...
All right, on to item O, payment claims.
Mayor, members of council, I stand for any questions on payment of claims. Or defer to anybody else.
Anybody have any questions on payment of claims?
Thank you.
Guys. I was, I was going to let Sarah go first.
I don't have anything.
Scott's not here, so they leave me.
That's you. I'm not doing my job apparently.
No, it's, it's fine. One comment I'd like to make on it is that the report we get, you know, it kind of bundles all of the, the credit card payments, you know, under the heading of whichever bank that is that issues the card and gives pretty limited information. I mean, it's meant to be a summary, I understand that. But we get more information out of the, you know, the regular payments than on the credit card kinds of things. So it's, I don't know if there's a way to make that less vague vendor information or any additional description would be helpful.
Let me work with you, Dave, to figure out what you're looking for, to see what we can, what we can help out with or not.
If we can connect offline, I'll show you what I struggle with on it and see if there's anything that can be done. I know it's a candid report, so.
It is a report of the system. So I mean, we can generate a new report, but sometimes only, only the information that we have in the system is that information. So there's only so much we can do with it at, at some point. We'll touch base.
Okay, then there were, there were just two that I kind of picked up on this, this time around. And you know me, when I don't understand it, I ask questions. So there was, there was one on page 113 for a fire department recognition event for $1,500. And so I wasn't sure what that was about. I know I got that question asked, but I thought others might want to know as well.
Chief Anderson, do you want to answer that one? Do you want me to?
Yes, mayor members, Sasan?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, sorry. Mayor's members of council, we had planned a recognition event for September 19th. It didn't work in a lot of schedules. So I did work with the vendor and we're able to move that to May 15th of 2026. So we didn't lose out on those dollars.
Yeah, that $1,500 is the deposit that we had to pay to book the event on that date. So that's why the dollars had to be paid. The venue needed a deposit to book the events.
How much is the total? That's just the deposit?
That is the deposit. I don't know how much the total is.
It's dependent upon the number. I think we're, like we were last year, around four or $5,000.
That sounds right.
Thank you.
I have one more question. How much did we pay for the Topgolf event? Because you guys had your recognition for the staff here.
Yep, all, all employees, including fire department.
How many employees came to that roughly?
Oh, boy. Good question. Twenty, twenty-nine? Twenty, twenty-nine? Yeah, something like that.
How much did we pay for Topgolf?
Great question. I can get that to you. I don't have that answer off the top of my head. So I didn't pay for the event, so I can get it for you.
Just, there's the same amount of fire, well, not with spouses. I'm just, it just feels like a lot personally.
Sure. I can get that Topgolf from the...
That would be really great.
I don't, I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, my other question was on page 118, was for $579 to the Metropolitan Polish and Protect LLC or something like that. And so I thought that sounded like a pretty expensive wax job, which it's not. But I ask you to give that answer.
Council, uh, mayor members of council, it's polish and protect, it's our soap, it's concentrate though. So it's five gallons and so roughly about, I think it's three ounces per gallon or something like that. And before we used to just buy a straight gallon at like 50 or $60 and that was out being reduced from a concentration, if that makes sense. So it provides more coverage for less dollars, but upfront it's $579.
And this is used for cleaning the trucks?
That is correct. Yep.
Thank you. That's all I get.
I have one. Sorry to beat you up tonight, Gary, but we've got two charges for cell phone bills totaling over $900. Does that seem like a, like a lot? Because one is 609, it's on page 113, and then one is 314 for cell phones. And it looks like it's just one month. So it's eight seventeen to nine twenty-three.
I can, I can address that. Uh, mayors and members of council, the, we switch from T-Mobile to AT&amp;T or FirstNet. So we have more secure. And so the, that's two months of AT&amp;T and then one month of T-Mobile. So it's a transition and then we still have one phone that we need to transition over that will probably show up still from T-Mobile. Eventually. Actually, it's going to be dropped off as we're not using it.
Is that for one, that's for just the three phones?
Oh, no. So that's, to clarify, it's, it's not just for phones.
Okay. I was like, there's no way that's phones.
That's what brought the original. I'm like, wait a minute.
We have, it's all for our iPads. So all the iPads that are in the trucks. So those are roughly 20 bucks a month.
I was going to question the first due change. I'm like, whoa, that's a lot.
That makes total sense. And like I said, it comes across the cell phone bill. So I was like, oh, hold on. Thank you, Gary.
Anything else? All right. Need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Carries four to zero on the P.
So anyway, you got it.
So this is two different resolutions. This is really just a formality, getting a policy in place so that the public can request data and how they access it and/or how we organize that information.
I'm going to say that this resolution is long overdue for the city. We don't have a technical policy for any of this stuff. So we realized that we didn't have that policy and said we need a policy ASAP. So...
I thought we did about five years ago. Was it something else or?
Must something different. Yep.
Not that I could find.
Because, yeah, I do not have a policy on this.
Correct. Because even people ask public data requests for...
We have a data retention policy, maybe you're...
I might, yeah, but you'd think somebody would have at some point wanted some data.
Well, so we've gotten data and we've provided that to them, but it hasn't been following this policy. So it's who gets the information, when is it given to them, how fast is it done, who's responsible? It's actually documented of who's doing what versus just take care of it and be done with it.
So we actually have to be able to produce who has requested what information. And currently, without asking every single employee, we don't have that ability, right? Because they can just reach out directly and there's nothing in policy that says that has to even be in writing.
All right.
I had a question. So if someone requests a physical copy, like to make a copy, they pay for the copy and then they also pay for the employee time to, it was mentioned that there is a charge for employee time. But if it's inspection only, then they don't have to pay for the employee time?
Correct.
Correct.
And if they're, that's if they're a member of the public requesting data, if they're requesting data about themselves, if they're the subject of the data, then they don't pay the cost?
No matter what?
Just the printing copy?
Just the printing copy.
Just the 25 cents per black and white page up to 100 pages. Just the twenty-five cents per black and white page, up to a hundred pages.
But if someone, like, the Star Tribune came in and wanted to pull a ton of data and just review it, even though it took you hours and hours to put it all together, we couldn't charge them a single dime if they just wanted to look at it?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Oh, and then I do have, I think this was, I think this is something we do have to fix. On page one forty-one, when it's the data request form for data subjects, in that box that's boxed out that says contact information, it says data subject name, parent guardian name if applicable, and then the address phone number, it says you do not have to provide any of the above contact information, but don't they need to give us the data subject name? And if it's the parent and guardian name, isn't that required if applicable? Is that an optional thing for something when you're requesting data on a subject?
Yeah, so if you don't provide what you're requesting, it's technically not a request?
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I just, because typically if something's boxed out and says you have to provide the above contact information, I was like, well, don't, but don't, don't they have to? Like, how can we, how can we tell you the data on the person if you don't tell us the person that you want the data on? I was confused by that, but, okay, so they just won't fill it out and then we won't do anything because we don't know who that person is?
You got it.
And that's not our problem. Okay, that's fine then.
Yeah, I think in the policy itself, it has a blurb about they have to provide reasonable contact information and respond within, I forget, how many days? Five days, I think I put in there, for any questions that we might have, and if they don't respond, then that is equivalent to no request.
Yeah, well, because, and I, I guess my question was, was this just a copy paste oversight? Because the original contact information box is from the general data request where they don't have to give us anything at all, like you said, they might not get what they want, but like, but it looked like that language was just copied and pasted into the.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I'll double check that.
Yeah, so we would, we'll just recommend, we'll just have to say that you'll have to provide the data subject name if.
Yes, like, that part is, that, that specific line is an optional.
Yes.
Because otherwise, we can't do anything.
Yep.
And I assumed it was just a copy error thing and not.
I would, I would presume you're correct.
That was just.
Good catch.
I tried to do my job. I didn't, I didn't find, find, find tooth comb in the other one. That was it for me.
Okay, any motion in a second?
I have a couple of comments. I'll make a motion to approve, I guess, for, so we can.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I jumped. I always jump that stuff. Second.
All right, go ahead, Dave.
On page one thirty-one, we have a comment about that we will notify in writing. Get back to it so I can just read it. Sorry, just a second. I should have printed it out. Because you're probably gonna answer this very easily. I'm almost there.
Thank you for the confidence.
We need the Jeopardy music. All right. On page one thirty-one, it says if we do not have the data, we will notify you in writing as soon as reasonably possible. I'm guessing, you know, outside of probably lawsuits, most of these requests come via email? And are we responding by, when we say we're responding in writing, do we mean email or do we also mean just postal mail?
Can be both.
Can be.
Either, yeah.
Either there, okay.
Most likely email, but.
That's fine. The second one I answered for myself, so I don't have to bother with that. On page one forty-four, there is a typo at the top.
The Dayton.
The Dayton thing, yeah.
Yeah, I do that, was pointed out and I didn't get to fix it yet, but I will fix it.
On page one forty-seven, we talk about who are, I think this is the accountable people? In, in this thing. I'm, I'm wondering if it would be better to just name positions and not names?
Yes.
Because people do turn over.
I'm sorry, I'll just jump right in and say the statute requires that an individual be named, not just a position. So if, you know, Amy Benting.
I also tried to do that because I didn't want to have to update this resolution when Thursday.
So if Amy Benting leaves her position and somebody else becomes the responsible authority, then you need to do another resolution. The statute requires an individual be identified.
Sounds dumb, but I get it.
It's the statute practice.
It's a state field.
Probably so that you can't pass the buck around, or if there's a place that has more than one person in a particular role, that they can't be like, oh, I thought so-and-so did it, and they're like, well, no, I thought so-and-so did it, so I'm guessing that's why the law is that way.
Sure, but it also means that we have to revisit this every time there's a change in staff.
Well, then no one can leave, that's, you're all stuck here.
That's one approach. I'm just, I don't know what will trigger this to come back to us, because we've got lots of statutes that, you know, that should have been looked at some time ago. We find them and say that, you know, realize that they address things that are no longer true or applicable, and so.
Do we have, when someone leaves a position, is there a set of, okay, now this person is left, we have to do, like, you know, we have to get this back from them, and we have to do this? Could we put it in something like that? Like, if someone in one of these positions leaves, that, that there is a reminder that this policy has to get updated? Yep?
We can do that. We, yes, we do have an exit checklist essentially that we utilize for when people are leaving, of what we need to do and what we don't need to do to make sure that they leave employment or whatever. And we'll just have to note that any resolution with that person's name on there updated.
Okay.
With policies, so. With this one, obviously, it's only two of us, so it's not applicable to that. Most people.
On page one forty-seven, there's.
Oh, you mean the other part with the individual and designated?
There's seven names.
So there's seven, right?
The chiefs and so on.
Yes, got it.
Yeah, I just, well, it is what it is, but I, I know firsthand, I still get, I've been retired for six years from the hospital, I still get calls from Excel asking me for access to the hospital's power plant.
Did she give it to them?
Do what you need to do. So I know those things get lost, and I just thought we might have a way around it, but we don't.
I'm adding it to the exit.
Yeah, it's exit checklist.
Idea.
That's all I had.
Anybody else?
Stephanie, did you?
I have a, like a, they say they're on their dumb questions, but this may be the first. By, like, default, let's say that, like, one of these individuals isn't here anymore, that would then fall on?
The responsible authority.
Okay. Just making sure. I mean, I figured that, but.
So Amy's responsible to get the information, I'm, I'm responsible for Amy making sure that she got the information.
Perfect. I, and just.
Which makes.
Like, if someone was on leave or something like that? Like, so like, they haven't triggered the, we need a new thing, but someone's on medical leave or maternity leave, like, you're not gonna be back for a while.
Well, that's not gonna happen.
Or no longer. You know, Marty might have something surprising coming, I don't know. We could just the person I saw.
Unapproved.
No, I'm, again, just making sure, again, ask the dumb question, but the default is that if someone's on that position, that would automatically then go to you. Okay, so even if we didn't pass a resolution and if someone left us right away, there would be a backup. Closing all of it.
Correct.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, so that passes, and anybody have a problem with a two-minute recess?
No.
No.
I thought I was the only one. I haven't.
Clarifying question. So.
On the record or off the record?
It can be on the record.
Oh, wait, back, oh, wait, back.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll move back.
Um.
Sorry.
I historically, well, okay, a couple of years ago, the first Carlson, L.B. Carlson, was our accountant for a couple of years. They haven't been since 2022 or 2023, 2022. So should I recuse myself from this conversation since they were one of the people?
Oh, L.B. Carlson as in, were they, were they then acquired by?
They, L.B. Carlson, no, so you got four people who put an application in.
Yep.
L.B. Carlson is one of them.
Oh.
They were my accountant in the past.
You do not need to recuse yourself. No.
Okay. Cause they aren't now and they haven't been for years. So, but, okay. This is the first time anything like that.
You do not need to recuse yourself. I was trying to figure out the L.B. Carlson thing.
Yeah.
Okay, item Q.
Yep. Same for the questions, Mayor, Mr. Council about awarding the RFP to CLA. They came in, you know, most of the RFPs came in very similar. It really came down to, you know, type of service and, and dollar amount, really. It was, it really came out of two, two firms and CLA was the clear winner in the dollar amount area of things. So they were significantly cheaper and right on par with what we could actually afford in the budget this year.
Okay, any motion second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
They had one other question related to, well, I guess it relates to all of them. So they all separately price something called a single audit.
Correct.
What is that?
So a single audit is when a local government expends more than $750,000 of federal dollars in a single fiscal year, there has to be a separate audit done on that project or where those fiscal or those, where those federal expenditure dollars happened. So it's a totally separate audit that has to have, happen as an addendum to the current audit. And it's essentially another audit that happens to say that we federally used our federal expended money properly and with all of the requirements related to those federal dollars. So.
So we certainly would need to be doing that now with the water treatment plant.
That is, well, for this project, yeah. So the, we've had a single audit since I've been here. We had it with the interchange project. And it's only related to when we expend the dollars, not when we receive them. So it has nothing to do with the revenues of them. It has to do when we're expending them. And so now this year, you know, we would be expending those federal dollars related to the well treatment plant. Even though we were awarded them many years ago, those didn't count. We didn't expend them until this year. So we will have a single audit this year. That is correct.
So it's a year that the money's actually spent.
Correct.
And that could be ongoing with other grants that we hope to get or have.
You got it.
Maybe the water trail.
You got it.
Something like that. Okay, thank you.
You are correct. Yeah, so it's a total, doesn't matter if it's by project or not, it's a total amount of federal expenditure dollars. So next year, we will likely have a single audit again and calculate that into our costs of how much we're going to have for an audit this year. Cost price, because next year we'll likely have the same thing again, because we'll have some well treatment plant dollars and some water trail. And that'll put us over 750, almost guaranteed. So. 750 is about a drop in the bucket for the federal government. I don't know why they care about $750,000, but they do.
Good work. Thank you.
Comments?
I guess I'll just make one comment. I had asked Zach about it before the meeting. But my question to him was, is who is the staff selection committee? Because the item says that they selected CLA as the auditor for the next five years. So just clarification, that was.
Yep, that is myself, the accountant, Dina, and then Assistant City Administrator, Amy Banting.
Thank you. I just had never heard the, called that or anything called that, so I had a question, but just for the benefit of everyone later on.
You're very welcome.
And that's it.
Alright. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. That carries four to zero and on the item R.
You'd click on the PowerPoint.
Oh, sorry.
You'll have to click on the PowerPoint with the mouse.
Yeah, just on the PowerPoint. So, there you go.
Oh, just one. Gotcha. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council. We're looking at the project involving the street signal that's going in on Dayton Parkway and Holly Lane. Council's seen this project several times, so I'll go through the background quickly. Stop me if you want a reminder of anything and then I'll concentrate on the new information. So if Council remembers, this project originally had two signal systems proposed, one on either side of I-94 on Dayton Parkway as shown. And again, just those intersections in relation to the recent, the new and the future development expected in the area. So a background, this project was initiated back in June of 2024. It was paused to determine the funding to be utilized for. It originally proposed to be a special assessment. It then moved to municipal state aid. The preparation of the plans were authorized in May of 2025. The project was again paused to verify the scope, whether both intersections to be included or not. It was decided to remove the signal west of 94. And then based on the plan approved, the plan approval and bid authorization, we're going to leave only the signal at Holly Lane and territorial. So again, just graphically, the one on the east side of I-94 is the only one to be included with this project. So there are some updates on this one. This project kind of slid late, if you will, in the process. So there's been some late changes in it. Part of it being the bid opening, I'll get into that a little bit as well. There was an alternate, one of the big changes, there was an alternate item added for this and that was to include a temporary traffic control system as an alternate bid. This would allow the contractor to install temporary fixtures to at least have some sort of control in the intersection if it doesn't operate well, I'll say, after the opening of QuickTrip. Because we're not sure if it's needed at this time, we did include language in the contract such that if this alternate is awarded, we are not obligated to construct it. In other words, we can award it and the item can sit there. And if we see that there's issues with the operations, we can instruct them to install the light and then we would pay it as, as bid. If we feel that the operation is acceptable or the timeline is short enough that we don't want to spend the money on it, we don't have to install it and then we just don't pay the contractor for it. So there's some flexibility in there, so that, that will be important.
Is that equipment that they would have sitting around?
We don't have the timeline. We expect it will be readily available. But that's a good question and I don't have an answer to that yet. We'll have to get that from the, the contractor. And part of the reason for not having that yet is the bid opening was moved all the way to this morning. So we didn't even know it would be awarding to, wasn't confirmed until almost noon today. So we're still trying to iron out some schedule assumptions. And then also to note, and this came in even after the council packet, it was that late. I guess to back up, we had requested county input on the design. And the reason for that is, I think we're, we're all aware of at least discussions of transitioning this jurisdiction over to the county at some point in the future. We wanted to make sure they were on board and we weren't building anything that they would require us to redo if the roadway, including the signal, were turned, was turned over in the future. So they did provide some comments and suggestions. To be honest, they were very reasonable. Most of them were quite minor. There was some pedestrian improvements that introduced some new work to the project, but for the most part, they were limited to, you know, don't use 14-gauge wire, we use 16. Small, smaller items in there. But again, it did take some time and that's hence the delay for the posting of the documents for bidders. And then we did have to move the bid opening out. And then we got ready to post Friday morning for a bid opening yesterday. And there was IT issues and we couldn't post until about 7:00 PM on Friday. We didn't want to leave the bid opening on Monday morning if it was getting out that late. So we moved it to this morning and we did get the information in. The good news is we can consider award at tonight's meeting and move forward with the project. If you take a look at a calendar, any additional delay would have been a three-week delay to the project as being a fifth Tuesday in this month. So. Should have warned you before I brought this up, a lot of numbers on the next few slides. I'm just gonna show the highlights and what's in here or what, what may be of interest. So just regarding the columns on here, the previous estimate, that's exactly what was shared when we approved plans. So Council has seen that before. The current estimate, I've just separated out with and without the alternate, but they're the same otherwise. And that information actually, that matches what was in the packet. So not new information here, but just wanted to point out, you know, based on the suggestions and revisions, based on Hennepin County review, you know, our estimated construction did go up. We added some costs for the temporary signal as shown. The engineering and the other indirect costs, these might seem a little bit confusing. Previously, we had 102,000 for engineering. That was to get us through bidding, not necessarily into construction. So there was not construction costs identified in that. And I'll also note, that might seem a little bit high, but that was also to design both signals. So your next one's ready to go, if that's helpful. So we did basically just shift some of the costs from the other indirect. That 21,000 was account, was intended, intended to account for additional construction services with engineering. We were hopeful that the county would be able to complete some of the field services to save some costs. That did not work out as we had hoped, so the construction services is going to be a little bit more expensive than intended. We'll be completing the work with less than anticipated assistance from the county. And then the other, the, the other work added to the project with the pedestrian improvements I mentioned, they, they do require some additional testing, so there's some additional costs there as well. So. And then just the revenue, I think this is familiar to, to Council. The QuickTrip is obligated for about 442,000 with the balance expected to come from municipal state aid. And that has been preserved and identified through advancement of future allotments through the state aid program. So here was the morning. These are the bids that came in. We did get four bids on the project. The top row that's bolded is the low bid and I'll just drop right to the bottom row, which was our estimate. And as Council can see, significantly higher than our estimates. I honestly wish I had a better explanation or a more pointed reason for this. A large portion, almost 80% of that is based on the signal system itself. And I don't have a great reason on why they're so much higher, other than the cost of signals is skyrocketing. The bids were consistent, which is encouraging, that there was not, you know, mistakes or, you know, inconsistency in the bidding documents. So we're, we're comfortable with the amounts. We even checked with the county earlier this year. They said, they warned us, if you're looking at these, our prices have been coming in high. We've been budgeting $600,000 per intersection for a total project cost. So we thought we were right in line with our estimate and then we came to this. So. Not sure what to say. Hopefully the next slide does help with this. So again, that's just the current estimate carried forward. And then the post-bid, the only numbers that are different on this is the base bid construction and the alternate are added, are updated with the actual bid amounts. As you can see, that puts the total projected cost above that identified in the CIP. I will note that the alternate was not included in the original CIP. And then again, and this hopefully is what at least helps a little bit, is the balance that slides through, if you will, to the municipal state aid, still well below that available. So the funding is there. We're not scrounging and looking for funding for it. It's identified and available for it. And then minor, but I'll point it out, there was a few work items in there that state aid said were not eligible for state aid funds. So we had to slide those over to local funds. So the city will be responsible for salvaging four street signs and one overhead light. And then this is just the same slide without the alternate. So if we choose not to install the temporary signal, there would not be a payment with that and the estimated project cost comes down to the 778,000, which is at least much more comparable with the CIP budget identified previously.
When, when is the QuickTrip opening?
October 2nd is their first, 5:00 AM, October 2nd will be their first.
So there's an issue? Do we expect it to show up fairly quickly or?
So we do, we do have a few options. None of them are immediate. But once they open and we witness operation and as the opening continues, I assume it'll ramp up probably quickly with use. I mean, we would instruct, and we'll talk more with the contractor this week. We'll instruct either the signals to go in. Another potential option would be to install a four-way stop. That would be much cheaper and much simpler, if you will. There's some potential risk with that, just with backups in either direction. So I'm a little bit hesitant to move forward with it. I think we'd want to take a closer look at it, but we could definitely at least evaluate that. The other part, and as indicated on this schedule, the work we do expect to start essentially right away. So in October, the initial work will include installing the bases and getting the site ready for the signal system. The quick, equipment installation can start as soon as it's procured. However, at least our initial estimates, and again, we haven't been able to connect with the winning or the low bid contractor yet, but it is estimated that that will be a four-month period. If that ends up being shorter, all the better. So.
That's equipment lead time, that four months?
Yes. That, that's what we were told to expect when we checked with vendors. I suppose it's probably been two months now before we went in for, for plan approval.
It seems like everything's pretty straightforward, other than whether or not we're going to eat that 80K.
114.
Yeah, it came in at 114.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't point that out, but there, yeah, the actual bid was 114,000 on the signal. So it would be more yet. So.
Oh, the 80 was an estimate. Okay.
The 80 was our estimate. That came in notably higher as well.
Say better than some of them. 200 and some thousand is a lot.
There was a big range on the temporary. I don't, I don't know why that is. I'm hoping that means the cheaper ones means they're on hand, but we'll, we'll confirm that. So our recommendation tonight is to award the contract to Collins Electric, which is the, the low bid. We are suggesting to award the alternate, again, just a reminder, that does not obligate that the payment is made or the work is completed. That can be.
So this is an alternate, we can actually say no.
Yes. We specifically included it for that reason. We didn't want to commit to it and then have everything working fine and then be obligated to spend whatever money that is. So instead, we would, again, we'd, we'd monitor the intersection upon the opening of QuickTrip. That's probably going to be about when contracts are going through. So that's about the earliest we could tell them to install it anyway.
And that will be the city's call whether to pull the trigger on that temporary situation.
Yeah, that'll be at the city's sole discretion.
So, and I'm assuming monitoring, we, we just put in counters or something? How did we know?
I mean, we could take physical counts, but I think it's probably just a perceived operation level of just experience. I'm sure QuickTrip will have feedback. If it's not going well, King Solutions, Semstone, I'm guessing we can certainly keep eyes on it. It'll probably have, if PD can.
It seems like.
So about routinely, especially during peak hours.
Mayor, Council, the idea would be to have the police kind of monitor and tell us what's going on, so we have an idea of what's happening.
Yeah, there's, there's no exact trigger, if you will, for many movements. But if it, if it's getting to the point where nobody's making movements out there, we're going to have to move on something, I suspect. But.
How quickly can they get the alternate up, the temporary signal?
We, we don't have a great handle on that yet. So as soon as we connect with Collins, assuming that's the, the direction Council chooses, we'll start having those conversations and ask what timelines would be from, you know, basically how, how quickly from instruction to operational template, temporary system, what's, what's that timeline look like?
And you're thinking that this, the stack up might be problematic for a four-way? For those.
I'm nervous about a.
Three months or so.
You're just dealing with so many semis, like you just need one or two in the whole thing.
Well. So I'm wondering.
There's the benefit of having two lanes, which is helpful. It allows more stacking in there. It's also a diverging diamond intersection signal. I'll be honest, I'm not 100% up to speed on how the timing or the operations of those work. If, if there can be adjustments to accommodate, I know with the, the one at 81, for example, that one can certainly be adjusted. But I think they're, they're a little more complicated when you get into those on and off ramps in a situation like a DDI.
Okay. I mean, even though it's MSA, it's still money we can't put somewhere else.
It, it, it's not free money. You're right. It's, it's available and it's identified for this project, which is good. But you're right, anything we don't spend on it can be spent elsewhere on a city-approved project.
I know this changes from year to year, but approximately how much MSA dollars are we accruing each year?
We just had a, we, we got a big jump. We did a bunch of redesignations. We got a big jump. I don't know if that, if you remember on this one. I want to say it went up to about 700,000 total.
I think it was 696,000 or something like that this year?
I think 25%, is that construction or is that total?
That's just construction, not the total.
So then that goes to projects. The, the amount is bigger, but 25% of it goes into a maintenance fund for the city. And then the construction dollars go to eligible projects. So.
And we're, in the 2026 budget, were we anticipating using any of this money that we now have to divert back to this project?
Yeah. Great question, Councilman Fashion. So there are no projects currently allocated in 2026 that would be able to be MSA eligible. So we would not be anticipating using any MSA dollars at this point in 2026 or in 2027 currently. So hopefully that helps answer your question, for a couple of years out at least.
Other than self-timing the road.
Well, yeah, I mean, the ones currently, we did 2025.
No new projects.
No new projects, that's correct.
Well, that's good to know. I think you answered this. So the, the cost for the salvage lighting unit, that's moving a light pole, taking it down and putting it back up somewhere else or?
The reason we can't use stated dollars is we don't want to put it back up. They won't, they'll pay it if we salvage it and use it on the project. But if we salvage it and bring it to Marty's shop, then they, they don't want to pay for it. So. And if we list it as removed, it'll get destroyed. So. If we, if we call it salvage, we will be able to reuse it if we call it salvage, but they won't pay for it to salvage. So. In other words, we'll pay $2,000 to be able to reuse a light and four signs. Or we could probably change that to $1,500 and have them just demolish them.
Okay. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, but I had heard at one point that Semstone was willing to donate some concrete to this project. Is that incorporated into this cost at all?
It, it's not directly into this. My understanding is that has happened and it's a credit to the city.
Correct.
But not necessarily applied to here. Collins would be, or their sub, would be the contractor and the customer on this project. So not sure how that pass-through works, if, if even an option, but there was a contribution made for the benefit of this project, is my understanding.
Yeah. So essentially you're using other dollars. So either the, the city of Dayton's account got credited for $10,000. And so instead of us using dollars for a project or whatever that we'd be normally be utilizing those concrete dollars for, we'll then put those dollars for, towards the project and then a $10,000 credit would happen on our account, if that makes sense. But that is correct. That happened.
There's an offset there.
There is an offset there. That is correct. Yeah.
I don't think I hit anything else.
Anybody else? Motion? Second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. And this is with the.
With the alternate, because we don't have to do the alternate.
Right.
It's kind of free at this point.
It, it is. It's, it's insurance.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Motion carries four to zero. And if there are no objections, we will adjourn. Adjem.